So I call this board meeting to order. And would you please join me for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, changes to the agenda. We have John Leclair here tonight, and on the agenda, he's scheduled for number seven, but I'd like to move him up to just after the consent agenda, make him item six. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. All right, so we are going to start off with the public comments. And Nick? If you would remind people of the policy.
Yeah, of course, so I'm going to put the agenda, or sorry, not the agenda, but the policy related to public comments up on the screen, just while I'm kind of going through a couple of quick things. So we've got a three main points, first being if you could use your first and last name and then your town of residence, just so that we can identify you for the minutes. Second thing is if you could just keep it to items that are actually on the agenda. And then third point just being, just make sure that they're actually comments about the issues and not necessarily directed at a person specifically. So we only have people currently attending Zoom for the meeting. So if you guys want to make a public comment, what you could do is just use the chat feature, I mean, sorry, not the chat feature, the hand raised feature, so press that button, we can acknowledge that you're ready to speak. And we do have two public comment sections in addition to this one, you can also comment later in the meeting, just as a heads up. All right, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, thank you very much, then let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, this past week, there was some interaction over Senate Senate Bill 135 talks about the adequacy aid. We've been talking about this all year long, actually, ever since we were in the budget season, saying that we could be seeing a decrease in adequacy aid, largely due to the numbers of free reduced lunch that would be going down. And also the reduction in some of our population due to situations around COVID this year. And so we're not the only ones out there that are going to experience that if we were to continue with adequacy the same way that we do it every single year. And so this bill is really seeking to more or less hold some districts harmless, give them the adequacy. If you look at the last two years, the last year and this year, which was the highest year and kind of giving that level to the districts for this upcoming year as opposed to more, I guess, penalizing some districts for whether students decided to homeschool or go to private school or because of how the feeding of learners this year went where we were able to provide them with free food during the lunchtime, sometimes it does not incentivize people to fill out the free reduced lunch paperwork, so we don't have that data as clear and clean as we usually do. So hopefully later on this, this week, we'll find out more about that and see whether this is going to take place. I'm hopeful for that information to come back positively for us. Other information regarding this week is that we are getting closer and closer to being a vaccination site for learners 12 to 18. We do know that some of our learners have already been vaccinated, they've been talking about it and kind of saying that, hey, I just got my shot, that was the library today. You overheard that, the we have several families who certainly have expressed that they do not want to have their learners vaccinated, and some don't even believe that should be something that was, should happen within a school setting. We take the stance that we want to provide parents with this service, an opportunity to have their students vaccinated, that's something that they want, it's not something that we're going to promote. So we've been very good, I think, about Nick sending out information as we know it, but certainly we don't have all the details yet, the state has to get some of the, yes, Nick?
Yeah, so I can give you a quick update, just because I got another email today.
Great, so this is enough to, I mean, update.
Yeah, so, so we're currently working with the Greater Monadnock Public Health Network on making this happen. Particularly a person named Tricia is on, she's been pretty helpful with our all the staff vaccination stuff that we worked on about a month or so ago, but she emailed today, probably about three o'clock. We are anticipating sending out another email tomorrow. The thing that we're kind of waiting on is they're working on through Vinnie, the site where people sign up for vaccinations, creating a specific landing spot for our school. So they're going to be giving us a packet full of information that we can send out, how to sign up, so on and so forth. And then the high school specifically is still working on the kind of logistics of making it happen. And the email we sent out last week, tentatively this Friday, but depending on how quickly things progress, it certainly could change. We should know more tomorrow.
So we continue to go down that path and architectural facilities, we will be having our first committee meeting, it's a short term committee, the Buildings Improvement Committee, to look at some of the architectural design work that we've had, talk about some of the HVAC needs in the schools, some other renovations, some other types of ideas about improving space for educational purposes. We're still looking for individuals from the community to take part in that, we do have a good group of, we have a couple of teachers, we have some people from the administration, we do have some parents from both communities, we do have some community members who are not really affiliated with the school, but not to the number that we're really looking to have. So we'll be making some phone calls tomorrow to find out if we can get some more individuals who will be interested in that. You know, anyone, just send their information that way, that would be great. And testing, we talked about this a little while ago, it is that middle of the month now, and so the Hampshire SAS, the is starting to occur and take place within the middle school, and so we've had some PSATs and SATs already this year, and also the AP assessments were the last time, going on during the last time that we were talking. So those have been completed. That's the update for today.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, on to the consent agenda, I, oh, I'm so sorry, Sean.
Rupert, I just wanted to ask about the question of the reduced number of signups for free and reduced lunch. I, I've learned recently that the I guess it's the federal government, or maybe the state has approved free breakfast and lunch through the end of the 2022 school year.
Yes, I was going to talk about that a little bit as we got into the agreement for next year's food service, but it is true that the federal government had approved that and it is unclear as to how that will impact us, for instance, it might be different for Ringe than it is for Jaffrey. Either way, we'll probably have to, like we did this year, ask for a waiver. Now, a waiver was approved right away, and we were able to make sure that happened everywhere, but we do have differences between the towns, so that might even, who knows, maybe even Senate Bill 135 has something to do with that as well, about keeping things kind of the same. And based upon the same free reduced lunch rates from a couple of years ago. But yes, so currently, what John's question is talking about is that all of our learners from preschool all the way through grade 12, if they go to breakfast or and lunch, they are able to go through that line and not have to pay. It has already been paid for them, and so you know, there's some important information as we talk about how, how that has impacted us this year financially, or the food service financially as well, there's that piece. And there's a piece of certainly providing people with that service and that subsidy, I guess we would call it.
Right, so you're going to talk a little more, you said.
A little bit more, yeah, there's some, there's some back to us.
Okay. Good, thanks, any other questions? Alrighty, now I'll go to consent agenda. So I would like to pull, I need to pull the April 19th of public and non-public on the consent agenda. And I need a motion then for the consent agenda.
I'm looking to pull minutes.
The motion I need is to accept the consent agenda with those minutes full.
Yes.
Thanks Lisa. Thank you Charlie. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. All right, so the consent agenda minus the minutes of April 19th passes, six, zero, zero? We do have six, yes. Still checking my math. Okay. Um, and then now if we can have a motion for the April 19th, public and non-public.
Make a motion, accept the April 19th, public and non-public minutes.
Okay, thank you Charlie. Second?
Second.
John, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Say aye. Opposed, abstain, aye. Oh, you abstain as well, that's right, April, right, okay, so it's, it passes, four, zero, two. All right, great, we are on to item six, which is John Leclair. Or a lot of it is anyway.
Well, those of you who don't know, we're John Leclair, the facility manager. And I'm here to address a couple of the items, obviously. Ringe Memorial and the clock segmentation and emergency notification systems. Now, I wasn't, it's supposed to be, I wasn't ready for this one. This doesn't look familiar. There we go, there we go. I can drill down as deep as you like, or be as just depends on, I don't know how many had a chance to look at the, the memo that was sent out with all the hyperlinks, but just to kind of give you an overall idea what's going on, United Construction, they were the ones that we awarded the original parking lot pavement here at the high school, middle school, and at the Ringe Memorial School. They were the lowest bidder within $50,000 of the next, and there were seven bidders and the whole thing, so they were very aggressive in their, in their bids. We looked at the additional parking lot needs, and we felt like, well, this is the best time to do that additional parking at Ringe. And we first went in clear cut or deforested the area, which if you go to the deforested area, Nick, kind of give you an idea. Those highlighted areas of what we deforested were clear cut back in December. And to make room for the parking lot and to clear up some hazardous trees on the east side of the school. So we can go ahead and get rid of those trees and clear that up and make that look a lot better. So those are the areas we're looking at, to the left, always the east of the school, that's the additional parking lot part of it. So if you can go back to the memo, Nick, and go to the plans, please, the construction plans. And I believe it's C 2.0 or the fifth page. Yep, there we go, even kind of blow that up. So as you can see, the, the existing parking lot next to the school, that's what United Construction is going to pave as part of the original bid. To the left is the new area, it's approximately 46,000 square feet, 5200 square yards, almost an acre. And there's an additional 64 parking spaces in that area. Now, as you can see, what they did, they were pretty clever in what they're doing, Turner was the ones that did the plans for us. And they wanted to get in, not a self-contained drainage system, but they actually slated all the water to the wetlands, which is the south of the school behind the playground. And they added some cash basins in a couple of different areas and swales in the front between the two parking lots to get all that water just drained to the wetlands. Now, the actual area around the additional parking lot, that's an area too, that if you look at it, it looks pretty nasty, it looks like some bombs went off. If anyone's have seen the place, it's, it's not looking too good now. We wanted to clean up that area around the parking lot and also to the east of the school, which is part of this proposal that I have here, that's to go ahead and do the parking lot itself and clean up the surrounding area to make it look nice and decent. The actual parking lot itself, I asked United to do it, and I did some, if you want to go back real quick, I don't know if you can split it or not, but just to give you some comfort of it makes sense for United Construction to do this, one, it can be done with a change order and two, no, the, back to the memo, Nick, where, sorry. And if you look at the analysis down the bottom left here, highlighted area. Yeah. What I did is I went ahead and I've added some stuff to that, but right now the, we have to stump the, the entire area, and we have to grade the parking lot area and clean up the surrounding area and also do something for surrounding area. The regional average to the right in that zip code of Ringe, it for grading, that's for gravel, that's not asphalt for grading, I have an asphalt number, but it's not on there, but I can tell you what it is. The grading part is $4.14 to $5.02 per square foot, that's what the regional average is to grade a parking lot. United Construction's number, which you can see down below, the 180,000, which is on their proposal, is $4.03 a square foot, so you can see that they're very aggressive, they're continuing to be aggressive, they were aggressive, the original bid that they did, and they're also being very aggressive with the gravel. And I wanted to let you know that, that's just not gouging us, I wanted to find out myself. So this is why I did the research. And on the asphalt part, which I added to my list, I didn't have time to get it in for Nick to get it to you people. But on the asphalt part, the average is $6.10 a square foot to $11 or some odd, depending on what kind of material you use, that's for adding that, doing asphalt in addition to gravel. And their number is $5.61 a square foot, so they're still below the average numbers, whether it be for grading with gravel or doing asphalt, they're still below the whole average of the whole area of doing parking lots. So I just wanted to be able to let you know that, again, they're not gouging us, they're very good to work with, they have a good reputation, and they're very aggressive in what they do. So if you want to go back to the original, please, Nick. Did anyone want to look at the, the plans again on that particular area where it shows the parking lot, so we can talk about it, or? I don't want to rush you, I just want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable, yes, sir.
Question I was going to ask is, the you know, look at your memo, we've got the two line items, one for the current accepted contract and one for the proposed change order. And I was just wondering, what, what's included in the, if you could just go over what's included in the current approved contract?
The current, the 407, 91850, the current one, the $361,000 was the actual bid for the parking lot. The two parking lots for, for CHS, JMS, and Ringe. That is the base price for the asphalt paving of those two schools. There's another $29,000 change order that included a median in front of the high school where that ugly guard rail is, that curb where the parents come in and turn around. That's going to be ripped out in a median about three feet wide, will be put in with granite curbs for planting mulch, trees, whatever the case may be. It would just be a very nice appearance as you come into the school. And then there's another $16,000 change order for the exterior of the parking lot and high school, where there's another guard rail that's all beat up and bent. That whole curve, it was like 200 and some odd linear feet, is going to be replaced with concrete. I was going to look at wood, but wood has soared 250%, so I said, no, no, let's go with what's there, but make it nice and new, straight. And the appearance would be very nice, along with median, so that makes up the 407, 918.
And so the, the part that's for the Ringe Memorial School is the paving of the currently.
The current existing parking lot, that's part of the 361 base bid, right, that one, this, the school, the courtyard and around the back to the silo, that area, that's the base.
And then the change order is to deal with the new parking area to regrade and to gravel.
Well, the third change order, there's one change order for the median, because that's an additional two, they didn't bid on that, that was not part of the original bid, the original bid was just the parking lots to repave, remove and replace. Then there was a change order one, that was the median to remove that, that original, you know, ugly looking guard rail, take that out of there, put a median in there. And then the second CO was the exterior guide rail that's beat up on the exterior of the parking lot before the edge, that area, that whole area, that guy was going to be replaced. And that was the second change order, that those two change orders and the original 361 brought you the 4791850. Now, there's a, another change order that I'm looking at for the 33695020, that was, we can bring up that proposal if you would, Nick, please. The proposal, second program, no. Proposal. Yeah, so that 188A7520, that is to gravel the parking lot, the additional parking lot only, right, that's what that number is, gravel.
The new piece.
The new additional parking lot, right, to the left of your, the existing one that we looked at on the plans. That 188A75 is for that area only, it's like 5200 square yards or 46,800 square feet, that area. So they gave us a price on it, and that's the one where it came out to like $4.03 a square foot compared to the $5 to $6 square foot, that's what that is. So I know they're not gouging us, they're below the average. The next area says, well, we thought about it, we said, well, if we're looking at the parking lot, what would it cost us to actually pave it? Because what Turner did is they anticipated us a paving originally, so when they designed it for the drainage and the flow, there would be asphalt there too. They knew that because we talked in the future, we're just saying, right now, while they have the equipment there and have, it's going to be the cheapest you're going to get, while all the equipment and the people are there if we want to pave it. So I asked them for another number, which was the $69,000. That 2550 for hydro seeding and so forth, that's for the swales and surrounding areas where the snow area will be able to push snow, that's what that is, because I wanted them to seed around that parking lot to make it look nice. So that's 71550 is to take care of the paving and the seeding at the additional parking lot that was the gravel that we're looking at originally at 188, so still it's the still same 5200 square yards that we're looking at, but paving it, so that's what that number is there. And on the second page, Nick, please. Okay, right here, now we're going to the east side of the school where there's no parking lot or anything, but it's to clean it up, that's where a lot of those hazardous trees with that other highlighted area in purple to the right, that's what this area is. And this area is to take care of the, there's two sections here, excuse me, there's two sections, the 33750, I don't want to confuse it, the 33750 and the 6075. That is the area to the south of the additional parking lot, that's going to be nothing but, it's just wavy hills and there's stumps and there's everything sitting there right now. And I said, well, look, we just don't want to do a gravel additional parking lot. When we get done, we want to see it nice, de-stumped, smooth with some grass, so it looks nice. Not, you know, in addition to just the parking lot, so that's what that 33750 is. And the hydro seeding with the tack layers, mulch, that is so it can grow grass quickly and nicely, so it doesn't erode, that's what that's all about. So, and then the 24640, the next section, 4500, that's on the east side of the school, that's where the, where the modular is, the preschool near the ball field, that area, but we took out quite a few trees there because they were hazardous to the school, so we took those out, but right now it looks like a bomb hit it. It's ugly, so we want to go in there and stump that area, we want to grade it down and seed it. So when someone comes in, the school is going to be very presentable, very nice looking, clean grass in a nice parking lot, additional parking lot with access roads to both parking lots. If you want to, so I'm bouncing around, but on the plans, I just want to show you kind of where it's going to look. Again, on C 2O, Nick, please. And you can kind of, yeah. And you can see over to the, to the left top, there's entrances and exits, and that's for cars only. We didn't want to bring the buses in there, that's a whole different animal. So we have cars only going in there, and right now there's a current stone wall there, they're going to take the stone walls out and use those as the radius corners for each side of the entrance. And with the existing parking lot, you can see right here that they have this right here, we have lanes actually striped for buses and cars, so they know where to go, and it won't be just a free for all like we do now. So, and that'll be a turnaround, you know, right there past the rock. And we're going to have four light poles, like we do in your facility garage, there's two of them, so they've got the bulbs in the bottom of the light poles. We'll have four of them over here. And that, you're going to have light, and they're nice lights, everybody seems to like them, they're not intrusive to neighbors. And we'll have an access to the parking lot up here. Over here, that will be the access to the back and forth, the parking lot will be a crosswalk right here on near the high block, that would school, they're going across safely, and it will be, we're leaving the basketball court for now where it is. And I think you'll find that in that gray section next to the left, we're going to leave that ground. That's for the snow, so when you pile the snow, you don't want to keep it up, basketball, you want to keep it top of gravel. And that's what that's for, is to keep it gravel, so it can all melt and drain properly, that's John.
But I heard correctly, John, that you said the, the entrance and exit up on the upper left-hand side was for cars only?
Yes.
So the buses would be coming in?
Buses will be coming right here.
They're coming off of school street?
Right.
So what you.
Same entrance that they do now.
So what you have is you have, if I recall it correctly, you've got the bus lane to the left and the car lane to the right, is that correct?
That's three buses, and then this one here is for cars.
So you've got the buses and cars crossing?
No, no. The buses will be coming around to the other, other side, you know, let them off after the bus.
So.
And then the crowd will be coming on the inside. But they won't cross. You have the bus lane and the car lane.
This is, this is the bus one.
It's on the other side.
This lane here, hard for a car to get to this lane, they have to come through here. Hard for us to get one, that's up the school street, so they're going to be crossing.
Well, this one is right here, it's where the drop off and pickup, this is like, and over.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's not where the car is going to drop off kids.
The lanes on the existing.
The lanes on the existing parking lot is for like, load travel, drop off, pickup. Expansion is for parking if you were to go in for a teacher conference someday. So do we say, will we have some signage there that says parking only?
Right.
Drop off, pick up, next?
Right.
Okay, all right, I missed that.
Coming in here, or parent car coming in here coming around, that's just for the additional parking that we need for eventual.
Got it.
Yeah. And what we want to do too is lay some conduit, because we have to think ahead. Because this school only has single-phase electricity. That's all, which is not good, so we have to think of the future and lay conduit down for, because the phase three poles are over by the house. And they'll have, we have three phases for a lot of things, which I can get into if you like. But we have to lay the conduit in our ground to be ready for it, so we don't have, we don't want to be digging up fresh pavement or asphalt.
I have a quick aesthetic question, you had said about seeding the area.
I have a quick aesthetic question. You had said about seeding the areas that are kinda clear cut now.
Right, oh, the right, the areas that's not gonna be paved.
Making it look good. It looks to me like that's the snow lane that you made.
Over here.
Yes, that gray snow lane, isn't that where you?
That stays brown for the snow and we're actually a little behind it.
So the, so the reseeding would be opposite?
Around that, it'll be around that, there's any room in the back and then come down over here and fill this all to, you know.
And on this map, where's the historical society's property?
I'll give you the stone.
Isn't it right, isn't it right there?
Uh it's on the left side.
It's same spot.
It's on the left. Yeah.
But it's from the road. I believe it's right. I mean, it's certainly abutting the whole thing, but it's.
I mean, wherever, wherever we tree and play, that's what we wanna make it look nice.
That's where you're gonna.
Highlighted area that we had in that purple highlight, wherever we cut down trees. That's what we're gonna stump and and grade and seed.
Okay. And when you.
Other than parking lot.
Did I hear you say you were gonna add trees to it or something?
No, 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 we're not gonna add any trees.
Okay.
No, no, we're gonna get rid of stumps. And the stumps, again, just so you you know on the pricing. I don't know if you remember enough, but on the analysis, it had six dollars or something square foot and up. Um that didn't include stumping. And United in their uh four dollars or five dollars square foot, whatever one you wanna look at with or without asphalt includes stumping.
Wow.
And the stumping average is like two hundred eighty three dollars a stump. And if you looked at that place, you know, there's a lot of stops on both sides. It's probably a hundred or two. Yeah. So that's included in their price. That's John.
Uh John, would there be any benefit to moving the boulder?
That's been brought up and it's kind of a sticky thing. I know when talking to Kelly and other people, it's kind of a sentimental, but it doesn't get in the way. It doesn't affect the paving.
Okay.
Or anything like that.
Um the the reason I ask is that a representative of the Sloan family. Uh approached me on that topic the other day and said that the family would not object to having the boulder removed.
We looked at moving at the cost of moving and where to put it, because there was a plaque on it and it's sentimental. And we felt, well, where it is, it's kinda like the spot where they turn it after the rock. You know, it's kind of a landmark where it is, and it's not gonna affect the paving people at all. And it won't affect the uh catch basin connect which we're doing. Over here, there's a connection, it's like part of a lot, when we wanna put conduits or. Drainage and so forth to connect the two catch basins. And any future electric needs, we can throw conduit and that doesn't get in the way of that either. Uh so uh we don't have to.
Am I correct in stating also that we don't know how deep that rock goes?
We don't. We, we don't know if that's just sitting on the top or if it goes down another ten or twenty feet. I don't know.
I did ask that question and I told the boulder was placed there.
It was placed there.
The boulder, okay. So we we don't have to move it. It doesn't, doesn't have to be moved uh at all for us. Um any other questions on the, I know it's a lot to throw at you, but. And I did put on the memo, if you wanna go back to the memo, please. Sorry to bounce around Nick, but. I did put the funding down below to let you know where the funds are, you know, for this. You know, I think that this uh.
What's, what's the six seventy five?
The six seventy five was just the number I was getting with Kerry to authorize the board to be able to spend out of the. Uh trust fund no more than six seventy fives. So there's some leftover. It's not all gonna be going towards the. Uh I don't know what that dollar amount was, but I know there was some uh monies left over from these sources. So uh Kerry put down no more than six seventy five to be authorized to be taken out of the trust fund to spend. Cause it's sitting in there now. So I guess you have to make a motion to allow us to take it out and spend it.
Well, five hundred thousand of it is not yet in there. It will be in there July one.
Yeah.
Uh that was what the voters approved. And so once that happens, then yes, the six seventy five, there's, there's about a quarter of a million.
Yeah, right. And you just need the six seventy five and it'll be the difference in there.
And then there's also another um ninety five roughly, nine right now anyway. Ninety five thousand that comes from one, you know, Warren article that was passed two years ago. However, in order to utilize that, the board needs to make a special, you know, motion to. Bring it over, yeah.
So so it's six seventy five out of the um. Seven ninety, is that right? You got, you got two ninety in the building maintenance trust.
Oh, the five hundred.
And you're adding five hundred. So that's seven ninety. And you're taking the six seventy five out of there.
Right.
Right.
Okay. And that's on the bottom, just a motion that allows us to do that.
Hundred and fifteen left. Jenna, I'd just like to say, I live, I've lived within walking distance of that school for over twenty years, and it's very hard to see the clear cut area. I've watched. Herds of deer in the morning uh in that area, and it's been very hard. And I am so appreciative of this presentation and just watching your due diligence with it. This, this alleviates a great anxiety for me. It's just nice to see it on paper and see that you're monitoring it as it goes and still feel confident in the direction. And thank you for that.
Oh, that helps me.
Very welcome, very welcome. Trying to be as transparent as possible and answer any questions and do, I act like it's if it was my money.
Any other questions then for John? Right, there's a recommendation then. Um that's written at the end of the memo. So. John?
For, for, at least for discussion purposes, I I'd like to introduce that recommendation as a motion.
Okay. Second John's motion? Okay.
Should we say something about the timeframe, given that we won't have that money in there until July one?
I believe the plan is for this to happen uh in late July. Is that correct?
Well, the the paving part will be the actual additional parking lot has to be done before that. So you don't mess up the paving. So it'll probably happen sometime right after school starts. They'll start getting into. Stomping and doing out kinds of things on that property. So I'd say the last part of June into July will be the additional parking lot work. And then. We have uh about four weeks or so between this school and RMS do the paving. So whatever makes sense, you know, they can. Once the equipment's there, they wanna keep it there, obviously, not moving back and forth. So I'd say the last half. June, end of July will be RMS, and then they'll come over here and do this property. It'll be help to skeletal for a while.
At least school won't be a session. So Charlie, you're making the point that the money, the five hundred thousand won't be there till July one.
But it won't make any difference, because you're saying you spend up to that amount. If it ain't there to get suspended, so.
Right.
Right.
The.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have it second. Some discussion. Is there more discussion or are we ready to vote? Okay, then uh all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it carries. It's so exciting. So excited to see it all start to come together. Long time. Okay.
Thank you, John. The next one.
Thank you.
Been fucked.
The next one.
I keep on going. Ever heard about it?
Two, the John McClair Show.
This one, um what I, what I, and I'll explain anything, everything you want before I get the numbers. Uh I know there was a lot of of call for synchronized clocks in the district. Well, uh we knew that was, you know, something needed, but. We wanted to look at something in addition to just synchronized clocks, because this district does not have any. Emergency notification system at all that can communicate instantly throughout the districts, throughout the schools, individual rooms, whatever. So we did some work and just so you know, Lou should tell, helped me out a great deal uh with this project. I did a lot of legwork and did a lot of the. We have out there. And we talked to different school districts besides the company, but we talked to actual school districts that have this and had it for several years and they absolutely love it. Um and what this system will do, if you wanna, I don't know if anyone's seen it, but on the product details, Nick, please. These are the actual clocks here, and these are so versatile, they're so flexible. That uh they have all kinds of different uh things you can do with it, and they can go with, and this, what the school's liked is. You can have either analog or digital clocks. In the lower grades, you know, they prefer to have the analogs, whatever, to show the the kids. Numbers and so forth, and then they come up, they can change it back anytime they want. And they can go up in the grades and they have digital in the school or or any room that you want, you can change it. It's very, very flexible. Uh the actual uh uh communication is about as flexible as you want. Obviously, you don't wanna have a hundred people being able to go in and and do messages, but we can assign. Whatever tiers you want to have someone capable, cause you can make messages and communicate to individual rooms. That's how drilled down you can go. Uh if someone wants to know something about the gym, and if David wants to say something, there's no practice today or there's a game, they can just shoot it to the gym. And it'll be up there on the big clock and they can see it, or they can shoot it in any room, the weight, any room you want, you can put different messages in there. It's very versatile. Uh it would also be hooked into our uh fire panels. So it's called the integrators and they'll integrate, there's four of them, one for each school. So if there's an alarm that goes off with the actual fire, fire panels, it will trigger. You know, it'll trigger showing in every school instantaneously that this is a fire alert. Or a fire drill if you want, but when when that goes off, it triggers this too. So um. And it, you can put in weather alerts, you can put in uh, you know, all kinds of, I I'd say not to get too personal, I'd say. Call Johnny to the front office. I mean, you don't wanna do that, because you don't wanna call kids out, but you can get that steep if you wanted to, but I'm just saying you can, it's very, very flexible. And again, we wanted to make sure, so you know, Lou being a safety guy, we looked into this and drilled into it, and we looked at other people too, and others. Which I can show you on the uh recommendation are very expensive. Uh I work with the uh the head guy on this company quite a bit, because I knew American Time, because they're in those schools. American Time is kinda like the company for clocks since day one. In fact, I think these old synchronized clocks from American Time that we have here, they're not working. That's American Time. They're they're pretty good size, very dependable company. Um so we talked uh to them and really got them to drill down. There's another company that we tried to get a bid from. Uh they didn't bid for some reason. They they thought they were gonna send an R F E in, they didn't do it. I asked them, you know, where is it? I didn't see it. When the due date came and they said, oh, I thought my other guy did it. I said, no, they didn't. Um and it says, well, and I says, you know, it's already come and gone. I just wanna know how come you didn't do it? And they just forgot. Well. I don't want somebody who just forgets to do a bid. And I didn't really like theirs anyway, because theirs was just a small banner and either you saw. A a flowing message or you saw the time, but not both. So I really didn't care for that one anyway, to be honest with you. Um the the other one that was Telkor, uh we can go, did you wanna go and see any more details? I mean, it's just. It's 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 a brain in itself. It's all wireless. It's all from the in cloud. What we'll do is. Um get the product in, we can install internally, because it's not that difficult. It takes time, obviously, but it's not technically difficult. Because it's all from the cloud. We were going in and install um in all the rooms where we already identified the rooms near the electrical outlet already. There's only, I think, four to six places that we may have to add electric or or may not, or may not put a clock. One of them is. Ruben's office. I mean, let's not put a clock in there. No power, no clock. Uh but but we went through there and identified everything. Uh we can go into the actual uh pricing breakdown. Nick, please. That's the total, but if you can scroll down, you can see by school, uh you know, German as clocks. Every room we've, we're gonna put a clock in, we always identified, is there a wall outlet close by? Um and how many clocks can we put there? In the twenty two, that's just the majority of these monitors are twenty two inch monitors. That's the majority of them. However, there are places that we need to put larger monitors like the cafeteria or like the gym, places like that. I think there's a total of ten. And in order for that to talk, they call it a a um a viewer, designated viewer. And that's just another piece, which is all part of the the uh schedule of the pricing. That allows that to talk to the in cloud, because it's a bigger monitor. Uh so we have about ten of those. In the red, you can see where we need power, and I believe there's around six places that we were saying that we're probably gonna need power. We can do power if it's already there and we just uh uh branch off from it, but if it's new, new power, we'll get somebody like Grace to come in, because we can't touch new power. But we can branch off existing power. So it's, and all you did do is plug it in, we put braces up on the wall, uh plug it in. Walk through every room and program it to the in cloud, a software that is twenty five dollars per. Uh monitor um per year, which is also part of the costs that I had set up on the totals. So we identified everywhere where we had to put a a monitor and what size and so forth in the entire district. And if you wanna uh go back to the. Uh first one where it has the totals. Whoa, no, the the costs, I'm sorry, the price breakdown. Yeah, right there. That's where we had come up to uh our costing, and that's the actual bid price too, just so you know. Uh excluding the uh shipping and tariff, but I asked him to give me that number, so I knew what the number was gonna be. And we had to go ahead and and go and price out the larger monitors in brackets, which we did. It's nothing more than going to an Amazon, getting a fifty inch monitor. And you you convert it with their viewers that we have. And we threw money in for the electrical, in case we need to go to Grace and say, hey, we can't do these. Particular ones, here's the number. And the actual uh funding, which is on the um memo page, is funding the ninety eight, seven thirty one, no wait. Now, will it be a few dollars here and there? Probably, you know, we're trying to be as exact as we possibly can. Um but if we find out that all the numbers as far as the product goes is exact. The electrical estimate is an estimate. I mean, we're trying to get as close as we can there. We also have to on the gyms. Which I know Charlie brought up, which we were looking at. We wanna protect those big monitors in the gyms. So we're probably gonna box them in with like a quarter inch Lexon uh material, so you can see, if you put bars up there, be fine, but then you're gonna block the clock. So we're looking at quarter inch Lexon, so we can go ahead and and block it in the front and sides, and it's around six hundred dollars or so per clock. Um so if you take in the two thousand, I believe it's around five hundred dollars per plug that Grace charges if he has to put it in new. So we're pretty close. I mean, it may be off a few dollars in there, but we're pretty close. And on the memo, Nick, the original. On the, on the bottom, you can see the funding. S R one is fourteen thousand, S R two is is the eighty six thousand. We come up with a hundred thousand dollars to uh fund this, this project. So once they're up is like every room, every teacher, every office, whatever, in the entire district will have synchronized clocks. So I have immediate. Emergency notification, communication uh instantly. And it, I just think it's something that is. Important and needed, especially the emergency part of it too. And not to mention the clocks, obviously, that needed, but the the notification is like instantaneous and it's. I think it's something that this would, I don't wanna say enjoy, but um. I I I wouldn't wanna do without it, because right now we're kinda like stuck to either on a phone or a page or. How do you instruct the entire district at once that there's a problem or something's coming or what you do, you don't, you gotta get on the phone, try and get somebody. But right now we'll have it in every classroom and every office instantly. And it's funded by S R. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. And this is something else that we'll be doing during the summer. So summer's gonna be very, very busy. Between all the projects that are going on and putting in clocks, but I think once it's all done, the visibility on the inside and outside is gonna be huge. It's gonna be huge. Any questions on this that I can answer for anybody?
Do they have an automatic shut off? Like what happens at the end of the day? Do they stay live?
No, it's all live. It's it's, it doesn't suck up very much voltage at all. It just stays on all. It's cause it's always talking to. To the in cloud and it just synchronizing constantly.
So it'll use, it'll use wifi and.
It's wifi.
Electricity.
The only electricity is for the monitors, for uh sound, for changing classes, for things like that. That's the only reason it's using power. It obviously turn the monitor on, but it's not sucking a lot of electricity at all. Just one ten normal outlet.
And what's the maintenance on them as far as when the, when the monitor burns out, that kind of?
They may, they have a year warranty, obviously, but after that, we're we're paying twenty five dollars. It depends on the monitor. We can always go buy a monitor. From them, they're four ninety nine apiece. I know in talking to these other schools, they've had five years and not one has has opened yet, unless someone damages it physically. But it has not, none of them, and we talked to three schools, and not one of them had a problem with any monitors at all.
I would imagine we're gonna have to start with a replacement cycle, because if we've got hundred and seventy nine of these things, and our life expectancy is five years, at the end of five years. You're gonna have a hundred and seventy nine to replace, so we should be having some. years, we're going to have 179 to replace, so we should be having some kind of cycle as far as funding is concerned.
We definitely can look at that, yeah, I mean, they're, they're not being used like a TV, like it's really cranking, it's just there for showing numbers and messages coming through the in-cloud, but that doesn't mean they're going to last forever. But obviously, they may have to look at it here and there, but I know in five years, they haven't replaced one in all the schools that we've talked to, so they have a pretty good life. And there's $25 apiece, which is in the numbers, to have the in-cloud, to have the software, you know, per, which is 4,600 and change, something like that, a year. The first year is free, so we have to throw that in, and we had to throw in the brackets for free. But you can see the difference between, Telkor had a pretty similar number, product, excuse me, and they're almost twice as much. Now, granted, I beat up American Time pretty good. They kind of started where Telkor is, but that's not where they ended. So, and I know that they're out there in all these places, and American Time, again, is a very, very solid company, has been around from years and years and years, and they just have excellent products. So it's, you know, there were others that wanted to bid it that were from other countries, and I said, no, 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 just keep it in the United States borders, so we know who, what, where, and where the fire's coming from, and someone can take care of something locally if we have to, but didn't want to go outside other countries who have this product, they say. So I kept it in the United States. And like I said, there was a third one, there's a little note there, the Sapling, who has similar system, but I didn't like their system, and I didn't like the way they handled the bid, or didn't handle it.
So it also looks, Nick was just looking at this, thinking that we could have a carryover of the website, like the colors, we're working on each school color, and mascot, and all that kind of stuff, we could carry that over to this?
We have flexible color, there is flexible colors, I've asked the guy today, give me the depth of the colors, because I know in the other schools, they have blue, they had orange, they had white, they had red, they had whatever colors they just put in as the background.
Right.
And I believe we can do the same thing with these.
Yeah, I would just communicate with, at that point, just, we could try to match the colors as best we could, you know, maybe they only have like a certain level of orange, and maybe not our exact matching orange, but we could probably, I could communicate with you guys and do the best we could to put logos and whatever else in there, so that it's branded even to like schools.
Red, red. Any other questions anyone has? I know it's only two items, two expensive items.
Oh, thank you, John. Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a superintendent to enter into a contract with American Time Corp. for clocks and emergency notification, not to exceed 95K, continuing upon the granting of Esser funding.
All right, thank you, Charlie. I have a second to that motion?
Second.
John? Thank you. All those in favor? I oppose, abstain, Carrie 600. Can't wait to see him.
That's it, me too, it's our six-weekly time. So we'll be on top of it. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
It would be fantastic to see all the classes changing at the same time.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks, John.
And thank you very much for all the work that went into getting that together, it was very clear and simple, like.
I appreciate it.
See ya. All right. So, we still have a few conversations here.
We did skip over the first action item.
Right.
Yep, in order for those numbers to do what we want them to do with the motion that you made the first time, we would need to move the rest of the original $200,000, which is roughly right now 95,000. There's a, you can carry it over to the next year.
Yeah.
So I believe Carrie has written a suggested motion?
Motion, yes. I didn't care to, you didn't make that motion?
For what? The entire remaining balance of the $200,000 special warrant article, approved in March 2020 for parking and drainage improvements, percentage RSA 32,7.
Combi, yeah.
Combi.
Yeah.
Hold on, second.
Second. Okay, so thank you, Alicia, second by Christine, thank you. And all those in favor? I?
I.
Oppose, abstain, right, Carrie 600. Then Cafe Services contract renewal?
Yeah, so in talking with Carrie, we have the, we go to bid for this, again, not this coming year, but the year after. And so every year that our contract, we go through this and give me the authority to sign a contract with them, given these parameters. The numbers that we have here, we did budget for, and I can see that, I mean, we got a lot of conversations about this during budget season, why the 46,600 loss, a lot of it had to do with the needing to increase pay for their workers, to half workers.
Yes.
Partly because we're so close to the mass border, that we're competing that way with them, and they just raised their, oh, I believe they just, they just raised their minimum wage again, to 13, 1350 or 1375 or something like that. So whereas we're half that in the state of New Hampshire, so they have to continue to work with that. That being said, what I was going to say, which, which lines up with what John's question was earlier, right now, even though we're projecting, this year, we projected that $14,000 loss, the company that we hired actually is 14,000 above, where they had anticipated basically to the good, so the, the opposite direction, which wouldn't, doesn't mean that we're going to get $14,000 out of that, it just means that we don't end up paying, because we don't have a loss. And that's 14,000 from the beginning of the school year through the month of March. So with the assumption that things continue.
Trajectory.
The way they're going from April, May, and the rest of June, will end off, they'll end up positive, and we will not have to go and pay for any, any overages, or I should say, not overages, but any loss to them. So next year, in theory, you know, certainly, if we follow the same patterns that we had this year with, through the months of possibly getting the free for all subsidy there, then we very well likely will come into a favorable position next year as well, and perhaps not have to deal with that $46,000 loss. But we did budget for it, just in case. And so the motion, and I think we've been pretty happy with Cafe Services. I think that the workers here at our schools, and the service at our schools, has been Carrie has done a good job working with the office there through the last couple of years. And so it would be a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into or sign the contract for the following year, or next year.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'd just like to comment first, before we make a motion, that I know this, the graph that we're looking at, it's kind of simple with the operational expenses, I know that there's, I know that there's more involved, like these are, these are pretty basic numbers, but I just want to say out loud that I'm very pleased that the highest increase is going toward the 15.8 labor cost. I, I just believe our cafe workers have gone absolutely above and beyond, and I love that, if this means that they get paid better, you know, not that anybody's complaining, it's just, I love that, you know, that's, they, they work so hard. COVID has really strained the resources as far as feeding children, and they've just thrown everything into it, and I'm just really pleased that, of that little thing. And yes, I'll make a motion.
To go along with that statement, especially when we were remote, just the number of meals that they had to put together, and the whole system, and our bus company should be applauded as well for how, having us transport, and Nick organized everything. So not that that was the original plan, that just turned out how it, that's just how it turned out, but we did a great job.
And it's been a pretty good working relationship, we've had some meetings, I probably talk with Cafe Services more than the bus company, because at this point, we're not doing, you know, delivered meals anymore, just due to, you know, the strain on the bus company to deliver, but we're still currently operating two programs, or at least one program for sure, in addition to the standard school program. So on Thursdays for remote students, we've actually opened up the entire day from 8 to 6, where if there are families that are remote, they can come to the SAU, and they can actually pick up a week's worth of food, you know, at no cost as a part of that free service. So we're, we've, we've really tried, and Cafe Services, and like Ruben said, the community transportation have worked really hard to make sure that we're not just addressing those kids that are in the building, but also those remote kids. We've done a lot with deliveries, a lot with trying to, you know, however we can get that food both to our, you know, in-person and our remote learners.
All right, so Lisa, you were making a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the contract for Cafe Services.
I think it's to authorize the superintendent?
Yes, it's basically to approve the renewal of the Cafe Service contract for the 2021, 22 fiscal year, and to authorize superintendent to execute the contract.
That is exactly what I meant to say.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Lisa. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All right, all those in favor? I?
I.
Oppose, abstain, Carrie 600. Thank you.
And then the reopening framework.
Reopening framework.
We're asking for an update to the bathroom usage. This doesn't violate any other agreements that we have. Basically, the weather's getting warmer, we're asking the kids to consume more water as well. Lines, especially at the elementary schools, can be tougher, so, and I asked the middle school, high school as well, if they would, if they could benefit from this, basically the language that we would, right now, it's one person per bathroom at a time. We do have bathrooms that have multiple stalls, for instance, you know, RMS, I think, what, five, five stalls in one of them? At least in the girls' bathroom. So basically, the change, the proposed change would be to, to do, I believe, two individuals where the stalls are, there are three or more stalls there.
Okay.
Is it?
So that there can be a stall between them?
Yes.
So the middle stall gets Xed out, the knee?
So if it has one stall, it's one person, if it has two stalls, it's one person, if it has three stalls, you can have two.
Yeah.
And, and beyond, two, you know, two people.
Got it. Anyone want to make a motion to accept that? Alicia, thank you.
Second.
John, thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, Carrie 600. Thank you. Okay, so we now go back to item six, which is the discussion of spectators at playoff games.
So this is?
I'm going to allow Heather Linstad's here, I'm going to pop her into a.
Oh, excellent.
Analyst, so that she can.
Good.
All right, so Heather, you'll be joining shortly.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi there. Okay, so on behalf of spring sports and athletics, we'd like to ask that this year, for the spring, well, we didn't have any spring last year during COVID. But during this spring, we haven't allowed visiting fans to attend any of our games. However, when you host, or if you get to host a playoff game, in order to do that, visiting teams do get to have two, two fans, basically two, a parent or guardians. The way the playoffs work, when somebody says, well, will we be hosting throughout the whole year? The playoffs, everybody makes the playoffs, and you're seated by a number being picked out of a hat of where you're seated. So our chances are good that we could host, not that our teams aren't playing well, all of our spring teams are having great success, but we should be able to host, and we'd like to provide the opportunity for our students to have home games if we're chosen to be a higher seat, so. So after John Leclerc just left, this is pretty easy, because I'm not asking to spend any money. So, so hopefully you see the, the, the need for it, just to allow fans to come. And again, if we look back at the fall, during the fall season, we did allow fans, even during the regular season, we had invited visiting fans to attend, so there wasn't a problem in the fall, and I, you know, our hope is, we stay with our same things, which has been going well in the spring, that as long as they're socially distancing, they can stay in their groups, but people have been doing that, so we really haven't had any problems. And of course, with anybody sitting in our bleachers, they would always be wearing masks.
Heather, is that, they're allowed, they want two per player, is that what it is?
Yes.
Was it?
Yep, and in the fall, we didn't even put a minimum in the fall when we had outdoor events, and, and again, nobody can tell me that we had a problem in the fall unless something came out, but again, I think everybody was responsible, and I think, as we all know, the, the biggest thing about visiting fans are, if your son or daughter is in the playoffs, and they're a senior, you certainly, they're going to, they're going to want to be there, so it would be horrible to, to prevent that. Of course, if you just, if we don't like the idea, then we just can't host a home game, we'll still be in the playoffs, we still get to participate, we just wouldn't be able to host a home competition if we are the high seed.
So are there any questions for Heather, or do we have a motion?
And the reason for the motion is because the spring document that we approved said otherwise.
So what would be the right way to correct?
The motion would be to.
Allow visiting teams to.
Allow visiting teams in, is it basically, is NHIA made this rule, is that correct?
They're asking, yes, yep, we can't be, we can't host unless, right, yes, so the NHIA is asking us.
The NHIA guidelines for being able to host a playoff game, which, or you could say, a motion to allow up to, to.
Yep.
Spectators per participant in a sport from another school during the playoffs.
And then we could just address it in the documents accordingly, being the spring COVID guidebook. And then we could just address it in the documents accordingly, uh, being the spring COVID, uh, guidebook.
The most crowded place is gonna be a tennis court and there's enough space, I've gone out there.
So I mean, I would, uh, for a motion to achieve what you just described, to work with the NHIA. A standards for participation of spectators or.
Okay, thank, thank you, John and Alicia, second sit. Alright, any discussion?
I think it's great that spectators of sports could change.
Yeah.
That means our parents can go traveling as well as home games, and that's, that's great.
Yep. Okay, I'll take a vote then, all those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, abstain, alright, six zero zero. Thanks, Heather.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
You too.
Alright, I'll pop you back into the attendee spot, Heather.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good one.
Alright, next up on discussion.
Yeah, I think we were going to, uh, forego the face adequacy discussion. And apart from just, uh, keeping an eye on, uh, what happens for next year.
Yep.
With the SB one thirty-five.
With the, which response?
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay. And then, third thing under discussion is the retirement stipends.
So, retirement stipend conversation, we've mentioned several times. Just usually to know that every year we have this conversation. Funds left over, that just happens, that there have been funds left over every single year, since that is conversations, since I've been here. To, um, pay out the retirement stipends for this, this year. Uh, to individuals, uh, we do not need to do that, it can be done next year, um, it is budgeted for. I believe I passed out a while back, maybe I sent it via email, I don't know if I did or not. A chart showing if you pay out during June of two thousand twenty-one. That you'll save about five thousand, little over five thousand dollars, uh, than if you do the next, in July. And that's because of retirement costs, it's five thousand, but, um, you know, in the whole scheme of the two hundred. Roughly two hundred fifty thousand, it's perhaps not a lot, but it is something that the district should, you know, consider. Um, so the question would be whether or not the board would want to. Follow suit as it has in previous, recent previous years to pay the buyback. Costs, uh, this year, in, instead of waiting till next year, the amount is. Um, well, depends, that, you know, we could, there are some individuals who have retired. Uh, in the last couple of months, who wouldn't necessarily, that, that's even like a year out from now, because they didn't do it in the timeframe. So if we wanted to include them, we, it would be about two hundred. Uh, fifty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-six around there, if you didn't want to take those couple of individuals. It would be two hundred, uh, around two hundred forty-six thousand six hundred twenty-nine. Fifty cents, so around that two hundred fifty thousand dollar mark, there's still an opportunity for it to decrease. Because people could use up sick days, and so, but that does happen sometimes, but it wouldn't decrease by that much.
But it's never gonna be cheaper than now.
No, but well, then this, then this coming month, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
I read Carrie's demo. Uh, she said overall, we're paced to return approximately one point two million. Okay, um, but the, it, it includes, the, the one point two includes the. Uh, retained amount of four thirty-seven, one oh seven, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so what she's saying is, we take the money out of a reserve fund to get the one point two.
Yeah, so it's one point two minus the four thirty-seven, that's what is left in this year's. After the, after putting in the five hundred thousand and so forth.
Okay, so that's the surplus.
Yeah.
Alright, um, that's roughly what, about seven, seven fifty, somewhere in that range?
I believe it's around seven or fifteen, what was the number, was it four hundred thousand dollar we're, we're talking about?
It was, uh, four thirty-seven, one oh seven.
Four thirty, let's say, four hundred and eighty-eight.
Yes.
So about seven hundred sixty thousand.
Seven hundred and sixty thousand, and if you subtract two fifty from that, you're down around five hundred thousand. Okay, uh, I would not support that, because when we went through deliberative session. And we talked about, um, increasing, well, well, first thing we did was we increased. The, uh, maintenance reserve from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. And that was conditional upon returning money to taxpayers. And then at the deliberative session, we again said that, uh, we wanted to get the Warren article approved. To allow us to retain up to five percent with a, with a public hearing in order to spend it. And the goal behind that was to have, uh, money set aside for emergencies, so that we could spend it in emergencies. And we could tighten up our budgeting process, alright, if we pull out the four thirty-seven. So, so, we can't pull out the four thirty, we need to put that back in place. And as you said, that leaves us around seven fifty, and if we take out the two fifty, that's only five hundred back to taxpayers. So I would, and we only save five thousand dollars by doing that. So I would support, or I would not support doing it this year, I would support doing it next year.
Okay.
That Charlie, that would be, uh. An additional expenditure on our next year's budget. No, it's in next year's budget.
It's already in next year's budget.
Right, but it would become an expenditure, that being in the budget, it's a, a plan. It's a planned expenditure, correct? Right, so once we spend it, obviously it draws down our, on our income for, or, or our revenue. On, on the available funds for next year, that meaning there'll be a lower. All of the things being equal, there'll be a lower return to the taxpayers in the following year. We don't want there to be any return to the taxpayers, because if we budgeted properly, we're gonna spend the, uh, twenty-seven million dollars. I'm just, you know, from my perspective, I think that it's. We made some, some prom, we made some promises to our taxpayers, and we need to come, you know, fulfill those promises. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the benefits to the taxpayers, and, uh, as far as the promises go. I don't know, can you just, help, help, I, I'm not remembering the exact nature of the promise and. Okay, there were, there were two, two things, okay, one is, when we built the budget. We had an original Warren article for three hundred thousand dollars for the, for the building maintenance reserve fund. Laurel wanted to increase that to two hundred thousand, but part of it is based on the fact that, uh, we had adequate funding to do that. With the surplus, so that we could return the money to taxpayers, so if we put two hundred, that we, we had one point two million surplus. If we put two hundred thousand more onto the, uh, Warren article, it still left us with a million dollar surplus return to taxpayers. Okay, and we were comfortable doing that, then when we went into deliberative session, and Roberta specifically asked the questions. We, uh, uh, told her that the reason we wanted to, to have the Warren article. That allowed us to set aside up to five percent instead of two and a half percent for emergencies. And, which we could resolve with a hearing instead of a, um, going to, to DOE to get the money. That, uh, in order to do that, what it would allow us to do is it would allow us to, uh, do more stringent budgeting. Because we would have the money in reserve to cover any excesses that we needed, if we had somebody move into the neighborhood, uh, that required, uh. Uh, outplacement to residential services, uh, we could afford that, if we had a catastrophic boiler failure, we could afford that. Because we've got the money set aside in our, in our emergency fund, all we have to do is have a, a publicure and to take it away. So in order, we explained that at that point in time, uh, that part of the reason. For us having that flexibility was to put the money in the emergency fund, so we did not have to budget for, just in case. Annual budget, in other words, when someone sits down, looks at a line item and say, well, now, something may happen, or this may happen, I have to have some kind of cushion in there to cover that. And what we did was we provided the opportunity to do that, so the expectation was that the budgeting was gonna go down. So, I think on several occasions, we've said to taxpayers, we're gonna return a million dollars, we're gonna return seven. Ruben even said we were gonna return seven fifty, so, I'm rather wary of. Reducing that further. Yeah.
So another important thing that you, you might have mentioned, I was, I was listening, I just didn't hear it. Uh, Charlie was the flexibility, there's the five percent piece, but it was, in my opinion, the more important of it. Of that Warren article and people voting for that was the flexibility of use of those funds.
Correct.
So it wasn't that we had to go and wait for an emergency to, like, the roof to collapse, and then us ask for that purpose. But it would be for, I believe, a variety of reasons that the board felt the need to do that. So when you move over, now that four, four hundred thirty-seven thousand represents about two point five percent. Of the previous year's budget, and so if you rolled that over, which would be about, you know, about two percent or so, maybe two point three percent of. This year's budget, um, so you're not talking about five percent, that would be, you know, double, double that. The usage of that, so if we got tight, that, the uses of that would be a lot easier.
Correct.
Um, to dig into, so.
I mean, I'd be inclined.
Whereas like last year, for instance, the difference is, oh, let's pay it now, because, yeah, we bring over two hundred fifty or four hundred thousand dollars. But we can't even utilize that money unless we get permission from the Department of Education to do something, because something malfunctioned quickly that we wouldn't plan on.
So it changes.
So the flexibility is a different factor than what we've had before, so when I originally talked about the budget. Said, you know, we can look at these graphs and we can budget based upon our prior, you know, our spending and our trajectory spending and so forth. But I also reminded people that, however, within that, wh- when we come to salaries and benefits, we've, over the last several years. Made the motion to do this the prior year, so that it's always kind of giving you that buffer every single year. So what we're saying is remove that buffer if we put it into next year and do it as we budgeted, but because of the other warrant article. Um, that was made for the five percent and the flexibility, that gives you a different type of buffer. In a way, actually more, a, a bigger buffer, because the, the four hundred thousand is a greater number. You know, if, if that was, well, you'd have to approve that, you don't have to carry that over either. You could, you could say, we're not gonna carry anything over, you could actually return the whole one point two million. It might be more than that.
I don't, I don't think that that would be a wise move, though.
No, it wouldn't be wise, I'm not saying, I, I wouldn't advocate for that, I'm just saying that would be your.
We don't want them to leave themselves high and dry.
Authority to do so.
Okay. So, the, the, after that little bit, the, the, the bottom line here is, are we going to pay it in June or July? Right?
So if I understand correctly, we don't have to do anything, and then it becomes a July extension.
That's right.
Right.
Do we need to decide if, um, the two retirees who are not eligible? Are agreed to pay early? Is that part of this decision also?
You, you could, um, they would be, they're not eligible to until next July. So it could be paid during this upcoming. Budget season right off the bat, if that's what you wanted to do, or we could have this exact same conversation next year in June. And setting paying them in June, instead of, if, once you see what we have for a surplus, if there is one, instead of July.
I am a proponent of paying them now, um. I'm a proponent of paying them now, um, I. Believe that the custodial staff, along with the Cafe Services staff, have been exemplary in this last year. And I would like to give Roland the money now rather than next year, that's honestly, this, that's the reason. It's not, it's not a lot of money to us, but they worked so hard. If, you know, if all it is, is us hanging on to something that can go into his bank account, I'd like it to go to him. I agree. And I'm, I'm, I am.
I, I feel the same way, but I am not one to single out individual employees and show preferential treatment to specific employees.
No, no.
I think that is, that, that our, our duty is, is to all of our employees and to. To our, to our parents, our students, and our taxpayers, so.
And in line with that, of, of course, yeah, let's give the two retirees their money sooner than later, even though they're not quite eligible. Um, if we have that opportunity, I would say that's, you know, that doesn't seem to be taking much out of the coming budget. But I also agree with Charlie that I would, I would definitely vote for waiting till July to do this. I would, I would say, the taxpayers said yes to our, to our budget, and they honestly don't always. And I'd like to honor that and really, really say, what we said, we're going to do, you know, that's, you know, that I, I completely agree with them.
There is another way to look at it, there's one, at least one other way to look at it. If you wanted to pay for it all right now, you could subtract that from the one point two million. And only retain. One hundred, like, if you want, if you're gonna retain, uh, assuming you're gonna retain the whole four hundred seven thousand for the next year. You could retain one hundred eighty thousand, four hundred fifty thousand, you know what I mean? So that's, that's another way of looking at it and still coming out to that same.
So that we still have a million. That we return.
Uh, seven fifty, yeah.
What are we trying to do? We're trying to get an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year, that's the bottom line, right?
Well, that is, what I just said doesn't.
But, but that's exactly what we're trying to do, we're trying to say, hey, let's pay it this year rather than pay it next year. We budgeted to pay it next year, but we don't, we'd rather, we'd rather not pay it next year, take that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and what do we have it earmarked for? I'd rather see it put into the emergency fund where you can, uh, have a public hearing and spend it on what you need it to spend on. So I don't think we're gaining anything by, by paying it off in June, and then turning around and looking at it for a surplus. And, and, uh, and figuring out where we're gonna spend it in, um, July. Given that we've already gone through a complete, uh, deliberative session with a budget expl- explanation. Which did not include that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar item that we're gonna put it on, so.
Yeah, the only reason why I brought that up was because the conversation went to not, um, giving something to some people.
Right.
And to others, and so I was like, if that was something that wanted to accomplish. If, 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 seven fif- if seven fifty, I don't even know what the, the mark is that the board wants, but it could be, you know, a million, let's say. But if seven hundred fifty thousand returning was the mark that the board wanted to, you can accomplish it a couple of different ways, is, is my point. You know, we treated the four hundred thirty-seven, knock that off, you're left with seven hundred sixty thousand or whatever like that. Well, if you kept it all together and then took the two hundred fifty thousand, if you wanted to, I'm just saying. You could take care of it all and then not carry it as much over, is my point, which accomplishes the exact.
You see the same end point.
Does not, it does not, what it does is it says, here's where we are today.
Yep.
Okay, we're putting four thirty-seven back into the emergency fund.
Sure.
And what you're saying is, no, let's not put four hundred back in there, alright, and so what does that leave us with an emergency fund next year? All right. And so what does that leave us with an emergency fund next year? If we get one outplacement, all right, for three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're not going to have money in there to do it. And, and that's the whole purpose that we're trying to build up the emergency fund. That's why we put the four thirty seven in there. When we used to have about two fifty or three in there.
Yeah, I was just, it, it, you're, you are correct. It's not the same thing because of how you, how the money is. Um, because what ended up happening is if you take the two hundred fifty now. You have two hundred fifty more left there. The numbers all turn out to be the same.
Yeah.
How? Who has the authority and how they get to be used is different. That is, that is absolutely true. So. I'm fine with whatever. I just wanted to get, make sure you knew all your options. And if there were concerns about.
Right.
Certain people getting something and not others, how that could all be managed.
So what Charlie's described. Gives us the most kind of control and flexibility. Is that correct?
It, uh, well, I think, I think what the way that Charlie describes it, if I were to look at the whole picture. It um, is the best way to make sure that the district is managing its funds in the most, uh, most appropriate manner. And then if there is a difficult situation. There's a bigger chunk of money that the board has the availability to um, access. To help out.
Okay.
So it allows for the ultimate transparency of what you're doing.
Right.
So that, that's, it's the, it's the usage. Factor that is different.
Okay. So. If we're. Holding off on this until July, we don't need a motion. Correct? But we do need a motion on carrying.
Well.
I don't think we need to do that.
We don't need to do that.
Not as of, not as of right.
Okay.
Still estimated numbers, the numbers will even be higher actually, um, than they typically are, um, than what we, this is a conservative number.
Okay.
Um, but the. Yeah, so come, future, come July.
Okay.
You can make a motion about whether you want it to include those other two individuals. Or let them wait for a little while.
All right, so. No action required. Is my gathering from the discussion. Okay. All right, so we're done with the discussion. We did action items. We're at board committee updates facilities.
We've talked a lot about facilities tonight.
Yeah.
And there is one other item though that we haven't talked about yet, and that is. The determination on the H B A C. The uh, company E E I made a proposal to us to concentrate on upgrading this building and the. Middle school. But after uh, consideration and deliberation, uh, we made a decision as facilities committee to go ahead and. Uh, work on upgrade of the two elementary schools. And uh, John Leclerc and, and Carrie have been back in touch with E E I with, about that decision. And it's my understanding that we're waiting to hear from them on. What the cost would be and uh, I mean, they gave us preliminary costs, but. They made it clear that they were rough for the two elementary schools because that wasn't their. Original focus.
Yeah, so it's two things we're, we're looking for. Having to deal with. E E I was not able to give us the uh, documentation or um, the. Law per se that is allowing us to use them instead of going through the bidding process. Um, we've done a little digging. And uh, Carrie is in the process of writing a letter asking for a waiver. Um, we, we certainly there is some language in there that, that may allow that to take place, but we can't just assume that's the case. So we have to, uh, we'll be sending that out tomorrow to the commissioner. And waiting to get that information back. I would imagine he'll be fairly swift. He's been. Commissioner Edible has been very good about getting back to people in a timely fashion. So um, that's, that's a positive thing. I would expect that to take place. We'll uh, we'll make sure that letter's drafted and I'll sign that tomorrow. Um, and then the other thing we're waiting for is. Well, we're waiting for the cares S R three funds, which we got a, we had a. Webinar on the other day and the. Was very interesting. We have a lot of. Um, we, we have a lot of reporting that we have to do ahead of time to be able to access those funds. That's well on its way. We're, we're probably ahead of the game with that, but it is. It was quite a, quite a heavy lift. Uh, so we've assigned different pockets to different groups of people to do the data work that needs to be done. Um, and we don't have the S R three funds, probably, and we won't be given that till closer to the end of May, which we knew. So, but in order to use any of it, we have to have all this other paperwork done and we will have that done. That's not going to be an issue. We then are waiting, as John said, to, what, for the final amount that we have in there. We can write the grant. We will start to write the grant tomorrow. The S R two funds, the million that we have in there for the approximated, because we just want to get the concept. Written, and then we can always change the numbers as we, as we go.
Okay. Right, thanks. Um, so finance committee's meeting Thursday. One o'clock. Somewhere. On this campus, right? Yet to be determined. Your office, okay. All right. Um, any other committees have a meeting coming up?
Well, I'm possible, we'll meet next Thursday at five thirty, Nancy.
Okay.
We couldn't have an education committee soon.
That would be great.
Um, we have. One, I hope we, my, the goal would be to look at some preliminary data by that point in time, hopefully. But also we have a presentation from a high school learner that she wants to give like a fifteen minute presentation from a. E L O that she's done.
Great.
So that was done. Uh, I guess she provided it to a group last week. Um, so.
Good.
We just need to find a time.
Okay.
And a date for that.
Are you going to send it?
I'll, I'll send an email out, yeah.
Organizing that, okay.
I mean, next Monday would be, would be fantastic, but I think it's too soon to get the data portion of anything.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
The wellness committee met. On May tenth.
Okay.
And it was a. Very nice meeting where we learned about the trails with the Q R codes and how many. Uh, scans have been. Received on the Q R, on the, uh, on the trails, over a hundred and ten on the range trails. Um, the school will have its own. Q R code subscription. Right now, we've been using Franklin Pierce's, I guess. And so that will, uh, once we have our own. Subscription will be able to manage what is on the. What you can access, what information you can access through the Q R code. We also learned a little bit about the food delivery program throughout this year and it's been. Amazing. In December alone, seventeen thousand meals were delivered. And that's. That's a lot. Um, and there will be a need for community members to join the wellness committee. So we'll be discussing that in August. Is there anything else?
Thank you. Any other committees? Report or have a scheduled meeting? Okay. All right, so public comments?
Yes, um, so back to public comments, uh, we are.
In session number two. Um, so again, the same rules as before. Uh, if you could just use your first, last name, town of residence. If you could keep comments to the relevant agenda items that appeared tonight and uh, and uh, just focusing on the issues and not uh, people. And if you want to do that, um, you just use the hand raise feature through your, uh, it should be on the bottom of your screen. All right, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. And board matters?
So we had, uh. With one item that we've. Realized we need to think about is the uh. Lawsuit that's being waged over school funding. And uh. It is the Conval lawsuit. I think about ten additional communities have. I decided to join in on that. And we are not at the point where we're ready to do that. However, we do believe that it's something we should. Discuss and maybe do some community education on the matter. I think that's. You know, because the question is whether we want to as. Two communities cooperative school district participate in that and to know the answer to that, we need to know. What the public feels about them.
Right. Perhaps we can do a public forum. For that. And invite in. The uh, group that you had discussed, Charlie.
Well, I think that there's opportunities to go to. Rather than us holding an event, there's, there's, I think there's opportunity to go to other events. Uh, there's a range women's club, for example. Uh, that you may or may not be able to get on the agenda. There are, uh. The board of selectmen. To uh, do a brief, you know, twenty minute thing with them. Um, so there are different. Opportunities. With different clubs and organizations in the different towns that we could probably approach.
Okay. So. I guess I'm uh, wondering, do we need a couple of people? From the district who would? Take the lead on that?
Well, do you know the timeframe of the lawsuit at this point?
Our understanding is that the lawsuit uh, has been kicked back after initial win by Conval that the Supreme Court. Of the state has kicked it back to the Superior Court and I. Believe that we expected to take a year to probably two before it's concluded result. Uh, uh, on the other hand, there was a deadline that we're not going to make in terms of joining the. The, the suit for the. I don't, Ruben, maybe you can explain that piece a little bit better, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that uh, in talking with the superintendent over in Conval, they. Uh, are at a spot where, yeah, there's some other, some other towns or other communities have joined uh, with them. Um, certainly it costs money to do what they're doing. So they're getting, getting other partners or their school districts. Uh, who are interested in doing this. We've been. Asked whether we would like to do that uh, at this point in time. You know, they would need to know at least for this next round, they would need to know information by tomorrow. Uh, so we're, uh, what you're saying is we're not at that point to be able to provide them with the information of yes or. No, or maybe we're pausing, we're, you know. That's kind of where we're at.
So I think part of what we need to educate people on is the whole process, like how the funding is, what this would mean. If we were to be involved, what that implication is, that would be all those kinds of things. There's a lot to it. And. That's, we need, we need to have all that spelled out. So.
So is it moved to, why would we go and be, if we. Have a deadline of tomorrow for joining, I'm missing why we would do the. Community input if we've already. If we wouldn't be able to join the last, like, so what's the, I'm missing that.
I think that there will be other opportunities to join. Since the suit will probably. Take several years to completely work its way through. Uh, if we decide we want to participate, there will be opportunities for us to, to do that, to join.
That all I was saying, I think is rather than come up against another opportunity and still be in the hmm, place. Why not actually? Talk with people and have more concrete information from our communities. That gives us a sense of direction that our communities are interested in.
What's been the best avenue for us to get that kind of feedback? Has it been through? Meetings or has it been through polls or social media? What's been successful this year? For getting a, a good amount of feedback from people?
The best avenue that we've, uh, for getting feedback has been through polling people. Uh, that being said. We have not had, well, we have not polled the general population that is not. Most of our. It's school based or district based. So you're missing the kind of a large number of individuals. We have done some polls in the past that have been broader and we've gone out. It's, it's very difficult to get. Uh, community to. Respond to those.
I think that's why Charlie was suggesting that we go to. These community events, these community organizations. Because we're not just then talking to the school population. Families, we're, we're talking to the larger. The taxpayers.
Would it be viable to, because we are a public venue for our communities to come and speak? How viable would it be to put out a. A newspaper message, a public, public announcement saying. At this particular school board meeting, we are going to be discussing this and invite public comments. And we will have a representative of the organization of, of where the school is coming to speak on it. And we really hope to see committee members, taxpayers. You know, families come and, come and talk with us about how about, how you feel about this, this program, this, this thing that's happening. Um, I happen to be from a school district that was one of the founding with Conval. That, you know, has been speaking very transparently about it. We, we all have a great deal of information on it. Um, and it's, and I believe it's very, very important. I believe the timing is important on it. Um, and so I'd be happy to help with any of this, but. It seems to me we do have a public place here. You know, that, that is very well set up to accommodate both virtual communication as well as in-person communication. We kind of. We've invested a great deal to have it be able to be a community place and I, I. If we simply set it up as an important agenda item with well advertised. Information upfront, it seems to me this might do. I don't, is that viable?
Yeah.
I guess personally speaking, just as the communications coordinator, I feel like it's a little bit more complex than that perhaps, just because. You're looking at a venue being the school board meeting where um, we currently have six people in attendance, virtually, nobody in person. Um, if we don't have a uh. Controversial item. Uh, we're in that kind of what we're at now to maybe thirty, forty people. Which, you know, not necessarily a bad turnout, but. I think that it's really got to be more than just, hey, we have a board meeting where it's an action item, because a lot of people, while board meetings are very information dense. May not necessarily go to a school board meeting and maybe having another. Venue that's not like, hey, this is a school board meeting where we have one agenda item that's devoted to it, like that might not capture the same. Audience is saying we're having a specific forum to discuss this because you can advertise it. A lot differently and it's, you know, hey, here's a discussion. Here's going to be the physical venue. Here's going to be the virtual venue. Um, it can be advertised through, you know, social media. I would say that newspapers. Historically speaking, based on what I've seen anecdotally, we don't get a big poll from there anymore, at least for events. But I think really the power in something like this is creating kind of a uh. Multi-genre approach where perhaps your. You know, for example, we've done a tiered approach to our State of the Union address where we have. two a year, you know, obviously pre-COVID, COVID's eaten up a lot of resources and not may maybe be able to do this as much, but you would have a physical State of the Union and then we would also do a video project. Typically, those things that we can create and then house somewhere where people can watch it on their own free time, we're getting a lot more traffic and a lot more ability. Because it's really hard to say, hey, Wednesday, six o'clock, be there or nothing. If you say, hey, we're going to do a meeting, we're going to record it, maybe we'll do a survey to accompany with it. That creates that ability to actually correct, collect some real data that's valuable. Even in just kind of very early COVID stuff that we were doing, we were getting a lot more feedback virtually than we were in person. And that's extended even kind of prior to COVID as well. I mean, we've had meetings Zoom for the school board where we've hit 250. And I think the most we've ever hit, at least in my tenure being involved with the school district, which at this point is probably about six to seven years, maybe 100. And I get that part of that's a physical venue limitation, but I think that if we are going to do this and we are going to really make an effort to educate, it needs to be more than just a kind of one venue, one sort of opportunity. So my personal opinion would be as if we could really put some time and effort into advertising something digitally, emails, you know, anything that we put up on the website, social media that obviously can be seen by anybody. And then just kind of get it out there that we're having it. And then, you know, make sure that we maybe have some experts, people that can really speak to it and give some good value. Rather than just, hey, I spoke to this person for a couple hours and I'm bringing information to the table. Then we record it, we put it up on YouTube, which can be housed on all of our social media. Again, we can put it out there, attach a survey to it, collect some data to actually really determine, you know, what we want. Because I think that the other way that you could really potentially gather some feedback would be like a Warren article, you know, next year, that's kind of a state of the public, but again, that has its own limitations and kind of yes or no, you know, you run into that issue, people just vote no on everything or just vote yes just because, so. Yeah, that would be my thought is, you know, a kind of tiered approach to both publishing it and then gathering feedback post.
Yeah, I mean.
But obviously, that's also a lot of, a lot of work, we're headings.
Talking about looking at, there's really sort of a multimedia approach. If we're kind of trying to educate our community, it's a question of reaching out in a variety of ways.
Right, and and being really clear on the pros and the cons and
But again, a project, a project like that is not going to be pulled together in a week or a couple of weeks, like we're heading straight into graduation season. That obviously communication ties into my ability to do my job. I have a lot of things going on right now, helping multiple schools with projects. So if it's something that we were interested in doing, it's probably something that we realistically wouldn't want to really attack until the summer.
So we have a couple of board meetings between now and then, so maybe we kind of think about this, we can have that. Kind of start to make a plan. The best way forward for us. Okay. Any update on technology?
I keep it on there, planning in general, we're continuing to plan.
Okay, great.
We made some good headway over the vacation for not technology so much. But the MTS SB, which is a multi-tiered system to support slash behavior. Kind of some four-year, five-year planning, and so we put a lot of that into the plan, so it's good.
Great.
Yeah, so we're continuing to work this, it's a more, a lot more to do, but we'll, we'll get there.
Alright, thanks.
Kind of remind us that the things that you have been working on are very important.
We have a lot of policy work to do in line with that. The the good thing with where we are at, our audit has said that our infrastructure, our physical infrastructure, safety wise, is very strong. So that's, we can strengthen it, so we should continue to strengthen, but there, I think the plan will focus more around the we have significant work to do with policy and procedure and practice. We've, we've started to on a monthly basis, put out different brochures as to different practices, clean desk policies, changing your passwords, you know, things of that nature. All of those things, I would say that were pretty, we've been boost on. We're also well, I mean, I have right here, this is important to a degree, a brochure that went out today, this is getting started with FROV forums, very important, this is what, something that Leslie put together. All of our blue sheets, which is, when when we hire somebody, green sheets, personnel, action forms, stipends, things like that. All our forms are going through this system right here and we're going to have so, so everything is prepaid, you know, touchless. So what takes us probably, I don't know, five days sometimes, should take about maybe a day, you know, with everyone going through their email and answering their, you know, signing their stuff electronically and so forth. So saving the time. But also in the paper, certainly, yes. But also then it will all get stored in a spot digitally so that we will have record of it and so forth. And it's not going to be using Google, it's a much more secure system. So how we deal with this and then our websites, making sure that as we evolve and we go go into this new website, how we're making certain that what we put out there is very secure as well, is 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 equally as important. So we do a lot with Google and so there's, it's safe, but it's not necessarily the most preferred choice of of these auditors, saying that, you know, a lot of people have access to a lot of documentation that we have. And so while a lot of it is probably fine, it's just PDFs that you sent out there on purpose. There could be other things out there that people would have access to that you wouldn't want them to, so taking that up.
Alright. Thanks. Motion for adjournment? Done? Alright, thank you. Second. Thank you, Lisa, and all those in favor. Hi, alright.